At which any basis affecting their interest is not to act in court. In order to the provision of a fact that the Kalam Board has caused us notice of this being to be published in the suburban trends on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, both stood up to Kalam Board of Education and filed with the Board of Ed and posted on the district website. The official result of the election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two was follows. Three members for three seats, Jonathan Eisenmenger, two thousand and thirty-seven, Jennifer Portman, two thousand four hundred and eighty, Carl Myers, two thousand three hundred and seventeen, and the Brad votes of eighty-three. One board member for one year unexpired term, David Leonard, two thousand four hundred and seventy-six, with five votes of thirty-four. At this time, I would like to do a board members to rise to the initiative of the over office. It goes to screen something else.
Hi, David Leonard, I solemnly swear that I was supporting the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that what I'm sure they believe in allegiance to the same. Let's see, the government established the United States of this day and we have the authority of the people, so help me God.
Hi, Jonathan Nelson, I solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications required by law to serve as a member of the Board of Education. And that I will not disqualify all in that office due to the conviction of a fourth degree crime. And that I will faithfully, passionately, justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Welcome to the Board of Ed meeting. At this time, I call for nominations. A vote, oh, sorry. Mrs. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Eisenmaker?
Here.
Mr. Leonard? Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mrs. Myers? Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mrs. Perrow?
Here.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Here.
And Mrs. Portman?
Here.
And at this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the position of Board President.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate James Donaldson for President of the Kalam Board of Education.
Second.
Second.
And third nominations. At this time, that's closed. The election of the President, Mrs. Donaldson? Here.
You got an answer?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
And Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to nomination election of the Vice President. Motion to nominate for Vice President, I'd like to nominate Mike Petruselli.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none of this team will be pulled over, please. Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to appointment of committees and chairpersons by the Board of Ed. We had on our, one of our district, I'm sorry, board goals was to improve processes. So I'd like to make a motion to discuss the reorganization of committees.
Second.
All right, now, I'll discuss, I had sent out a draft based on, I'd sent out a draft based on numerous conversations that we had and looking over how we actually did business within the district. And recommendations by Mr. Mango that also gave us, based on some of the conversations we had during his interview. So we'll in the last year sort of try to fine tune some of our processes. So I shared it with everybody and I just wanted to go through, any thoughts to you guys, any of the board members had, does anybody have any questions? They won't discuss this at all?
Did everybody have a chance to read it?
Has everybody had a chance to look them over?
I just wanted to say, I love that these were combined. I feel that they have a lot in common and it will bring, cut down on redundancy and excess meetings. And I am very excited to see the second part of the Education Committee. I think that's fantastic. That's kind of a new one. So I think it's fantastic. I think it's very well put together.
No, I agree with Kelly, I mean, we've had the same committee structure for a long time. So it's good to kind of maybe streamline some things, we put some things together. You know, if we can save a meeting here or there, that's always good, right? Try to give us a bit of time.
Well, I do like the idea that moving forward, if we wanted to kind of do what David suggested, which is have a meeting day. This will make it a lot easier since a lot of that, the discussion of facilities, finance, and security kind of overlapped anyway. So I think it does make a lot of sense when I shared the board policies. There's actually, we're going to want to look at one five five, which is board committees, Jonathan. Because well, if you are the policy chair, start. So we'll have to, you know, the policy committee, we'll have to look at that because it does talk about what the committees are constituted. And one of them actually is facilities, finance, and security. So it's funny how we kind of broke away from that and now we're going back to it. So, okay, well, why don't we then pull the board for changing committees as outlined as we have now got to share with them. And for the, for the public, we are going to condense some of the committees. It will be posted on the website, but we'll have a policy committee. We'll have a community relations and KEA liaison committee. Personnel negotiations will combine to be one committee. Education will be expanded to also discuss student activities, extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And then facilities will combine with finance. And then we're actually adding security as part of that committee, which was already part of it, but we're formalizing it in the name of the committee. So there'll be only five instead of the several, I think we had six, seven, eight, only five now. And then this will be posted when we approve it. If we approve it, it will obviously go on the website.
So I'll make a motion to accept a new committee structure as described.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
Yes.
And welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year and congratulations. And based on that, those previous conversations, I have just, just something for you to read that earlier today in Central Office, we composed a practice draft of what the end of month would look like based on the condensing of these committees. And moving up committee reports, of course, we would have to revise our existing policy on functions of a board, but that's easy enough. And I would share that with the full board when we're there. But this is just for you, you don't have to read it now, but just take a look as the agenda will also change as to where we place all the agenda items. So we'll go down to four sections based on our committees.
Thanks, Dave. This is also part of our board goals, which was to streamline processes and make them easier to follow along the agenda as well. Everybody has a copy of that. That's something we'll be looking at. Probably in the exact, like myself and Dave, and then we'll go, what they come together and then we'll share that later for final decision. Okay, this team will pull the board on the changes to committee structure. Sorry, I didn't do that very well. Okay. During to public comments on agenda items, if anybody has anything they'd like to comment for your review or starting the organization agenda.
I've got a few online public comments. One is from what I assume is a, you know, community member parent, Mrs. M.R. Hosey. And she thanks everyone involved in the live streaming Board of Ed meetings, very happy. One other one from a parent, Mrs. Gingold, or Ginggold. She asked specifically, please specifically tell us what we've talked about high school. Nothing was actually told. So I'm not sure what she was referring to in that comment.
That's not a non-agenda.
That's a non-agenda.
Yeah, we could, we'll talk to that later. This is non-agenda, my children. We'll bring that question back up at the end of the meeting for non-agenda comments or questions. Number nine, appointments and approvals for twenty twenty-three. Okay, time and place of meetings. There's a motion that the Board of Education will hold their twenty twenty-three meetings on the second and fourth Thursdays in accordance with the schedule dates. Okay, so it's actually also on their new business at the end, but we are going to discuss changing date of the meeting. So what I'd like to do is have a motion to table that. And then we'll bring that back up when we discuss new business. So we'll take, so motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table that for discussion of new business.
Second.
Okay, so item A will be tabled for the end of the meeting. A, appointment of Board Secretary, be resolved that the Kalam Board of Education appoint Kerry Keane as Secretary to the Board of Education for twenty twenty-three. C, appointment of Treasurer of Funds, be resolved that Board of Education appoint Jennifer Solomon as Treasurer of School Funds for twenty twenty-three. D, official newspapers. Be resolved that the Kalam Board of Education designate the suburban trends, daily record, and Star Ledger as the official newspapers for the Kalam Board of Ed. And the suburban trends will be used for legal notices. The other papers are being recommended to correct flexibility for emergencies. E, official depositories, be resolved that Kalam Board of Ed designate the official depositories as indicated in the agenda. The adoption of the curriculum, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, adopting the existing curriculum for this, the rest of this school year and the next school year or until such time that the board remains the same. G, adoption of actions, policies, and contracts that we adopt based on the recommendations of superintendent of schools. Then we adopt all existing actionist policies, policy manuals, and contracts that were entered into by the previous Board for twenty twenty-two this school year, completion of this school year and next school year until such time as we amend the same. Adoption of textbooks, again, adopting these existing K through twelve textbooks until such time as we amend them. And adoption of the evaluation systems for the teacher evaluation system, the principal evaluation system, certified staff, supervisor evaluation system. Purchasing, be resolved that we appoint Kerry Keane as qualified purchasing agent with a threshold of up to forty-four thousand. Be resolved that the Board of Ed authorizes Kerry Keane as the Business Administrator or Board Secretary to invest funds for the Kalam Board of Ed and following depositories as indicated in the agenda. Be resolved that the Kalam Board of Ed approved foundation organizations for cooperative purchasing as indicated in the agenda. Okay, professional services. Be resolved that the Kalam Board of Education approve our existing Board Attorney Negotiator with an annual cost of approximately seventy thousand. Be resolved that the Board of Ed approve McManaman and Swatman as Bond Counsel at an approximate annual cost of a thousand dollars. Be resolved that the Kalam Board of Ed appoint Phoenix Advisors of Board of Town in Jersey to act as the agent and registered municipal advisor for outstanding bonds. Be resolved that the Kalam Board of Education approve our existing Civil Engineer and Architect as indicated in the agenda. Be resolved that we approve the professional services contract with Arrow Environmental Services as our environmental consultant. We approve the professional services for our school auditors as indicated in the agenda. We also approve Dr. Vincent Knappnerney as a school medical inspector record for a fee of nine thousand dollars. We approve the Polaris Galaxy Insurance for insurance agent record and approve Brown and Brown Benefits Advisors for employee benefits specialists. The computer service providers as indicated in the agenda. Of course, as a computer service provider for the student records, that we adopt parliamentary procedures. The uniform recharred of accountants, that we adopt the uniform minimum charred accountants for the New Jersey public schools. Bonding. The, be resolved that we approve the bonding and Board Secretary and Treasurer of Monies for this year and for the next school year. Standard operating procedures, that we approve all the guides and standing operating procedures as currently listed. Q, employing tax shelter annuities, that we approve the tax shelter annuities and mutual funds as indicated in the agenda. We approve the four-five-seven account provider, Equitable. The disability insurance providers also as listed in the agenda. The flexible spending of employee accounts, Colonial. And our compliance positions, that we appoint the following persons to the corresponding compliance positions as listed in the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve and then B through R.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I was going to just might be worth it for the new board members to understand that, you know, we approve all these things basically to keep the district running every year at the new board meeting. Doesn't mean that any of these things can't be readdressed and can be done time later, right? So just, I know there's some confusion about sometimes that, like, you know, new board member voting on all this stuff that, like, obviously, you know who these people are. And so it's, that makes you feel, you know, more comfortable about that, just to know that's how it works. Just to kind of keep the, keep the lights on. And we do, you know, to get at the end of the day.
Interesting, a stupid question. Along the same line. Any of these, these are all existing contracts. There are no changes to any of the existing policy procedures. There's contracts.
Right, yeah, so I think they're just basically, the new board kind of saying, okay, let business go on as usual, basically. That's how it works. And then, like, if you want to, and we'll get to it in the new business, or if you'd like, what about, for like, RFP for particular service, you can, you can always.
Right, so basically, it's allowing for us to continue to have the things that we have in place. And then a lot of it was until we amend, if we decide to amend them. Like, at the end of the school year, we do look at curriculum, textbooks, and all that stuff. Saying basically, right now, we're just going to take it as is. Until such time as we decide we want to discuss it, we can always, you can always bring up a motion. We can then discuss it, reassess it, refer to committee, as soon as possible. But just the next month or so, until you guys are ready to go, and then it's just to continue everything with the new board. Good? Okay. Seeing no further discussions, this team will pull the board. And that is, again, thank you, Mike, for correcting, B through R, not A. Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson? Yes. Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
And Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, we have the, excuse me, the tabled item of the board meeting dates. So I'd like to make a motion to discuss or make a motion to change the meeting day for the board of ed.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, what has come up in the, in some of our best practices and in community relations committee meetings was that the town council meets on Thursdays. And that was always kind of conflict. We tried to do it, they graciously changed it to a different date. But then it would be conflicted if we went to one meeting month, then we were, I remember the football team couldn't come because they would be recognized at the town council meeting. And I think it would actually do, be a better process for us as well, which I discussed. We had discussed with the other board about having less time between the weekend and the morning. So that we could get the agenda out, close the business on Friday, and it would be kind of still relevant agenda. So I think all those things can tie together to moving the meeting to a different day earlier in the week. Does anybody have a date that they prefer? Tuesday, Wednesday? I know Monday's probably not a good day. Yeah, so I know dates on Mondays. I don't either, so it would really probably be Tuesday or Wednesday. Comments, thoughts?
I'd prefer Tuesday, I think, at the forty-eight hours to have the agenda, to be able to have the agenda over the weekend. Is going to be able to, you know, sit through it and research and be ready for Tuesday.
My preference is earlier in the week about Tuesday, so I prefer Tuesday and Wednesday, but I can go with either. You know, from a schedule perspective, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so how about we vote on Tuesday first? Does anybody have an objection with Tuesday? No? Okay, all right, so this team will pull the board for a, moving the meeting day to, and then we'll be the second and fourth Tuesday. So move from the Thursday, second and fourth Thursday, to the second and fourth Tuesday. Yes.
Just for clarification, these are for full-on public meetings?
Yes.
Correct.
Same. Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
And Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Okay, another item for under new business was to go for a request for proposal for a, for Board Council and Architect. And these were some discussions that we had in the past. I think it was nineteen ninety-four, is that how long we haven't seen attorney? So I'd like to make a motion to discuss an RFP for Board Council.
Second.
So I'd like to end on this discussion from the board. Thoughts on, do you think it's time to maybe re-interview Council, the current lovers? That's my question to all of you.
For me, as a new board member, I think that's great to be able to see, you know, your qualifications from different firms and learn about them and then make choices going forward. I'd be interested in even the different professionals that we approved. Not necessarily looking to replace them all, but getting almost like a resume or, or like a list of their accomplishments or qualifications to better know them, to decide as we're going forward, you know, what's best for the district.
So, yeah, thanks, Greg.
Dave, you want to comment on that? Yeah, just for clarification, the, going out to RFP for the Architect and for our Board Council was something that I recognized during the interview process, which was now seven, eight months ago. And once I knew that I was selected, I wrote that up to the old board. New superintendent, the board that was here that hired me, new board, obviously. Here, we'll have a new director of curriculum come July first, all new. So no disrespect to anybody we've had, and that doesn't mean that they won't, if they decide to apply for the RFP, that they can't be brought back. It just means, let's take a look at what's out there. We do have a lot of work to do. So, you know, nineteen ninety-four, it was a good year. It's also the year the keel was on, I'll keep going about keel. So, I mean, it's a long ride. It's a long ride.
Now, I know we talked about the Council Architect, but the, Mrs. Portman's point was, is there anybody else? Any other services that we were thinking RFP for, Dave, or nothing else that they could?
I wasn't, but everything's always open on the table.
Okay, I'm just, I guess my question was, is if we're going through the process anyway, if there's anything else that we want to look at, it's probably the time.
Well, the one thing to consider, though, as I said, just giving background, we decided to go down that route, is that we do have to interview. So we need to do, like, a bit at a time.
Yes.
Just, I mean, I, I have, I haven't been through the superintendent's version, a lot of interviews. So this is like on this whole tab, but it is time, you know, it is a bit of time for us to sit down and interview people and maybe bring them back a second time. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for, I think that's a great idea, Jim. And I just wrote it down for board member packet as maybe the, kind of the, the resume of the people that we do have, like the auditing folks and the district doctor, just to know who they are, what's their background, how long they've been there. Might be a good thing for, for us to just have, I actually haven't known myself because it relates to the doctor. And I know I had asked Dave about how long he found the law firm, so he had found out for me. So it might just be good for us to have that background information. So I will look at that and see if, since we're not thinking, we are looking to do a board of impact for new members. But that's a relative to be a term, is there anything specific anybody else has for Board, Board Council? Okay, so.
Again, it's silly, but these get posted into the Star Ledger, the school association. What, what's the fee for, like, is there benefits if you do them all together? Is it just one add or? I'd recommend, having been through the process multiple times, one at a time. So if the board determines that the Board Council is the more important of the two right now, then I'd recommend that, you know, we take the month of January, put together what we'd like the ad to read, replace the ad, and maybe we, we advertise for a special meeting at the end of February. And it'll have to be in closed session, and it's for interviews, for purpose of interviews. And then we take on the Architect. And that kind of flows into the budget development, because when we're talking capital projects and we're talking preliminary budget, there's a lot of work structurally that we have to do and a lot of recommendations going down the tunnel and down the path from my office and from this team's office. You know, we're going to change Architects, that'd be the time.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and, if you could, pull the board on an RFP for Board Council. Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher-Sellery?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrow?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'd also like to make a motion to discuss an RFP for Architect Firm. Second. Okay. So now, along the same lines of what Dave was saying, sorry, Mr. Mango was saying, we do have a lot of capital projects coming up, roof repairs, a new roof for keel. I also think we may want to do a demographic study because we're really, one of our goals, district goals, is for full day kindergarten. So probably need to know what that looks like this year, next year, in the next three or four years. And I don't know, when was the last time we had one? She's old.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
We do get one free charge from State of New Jersey. And while she's still in the lineup. And if we want to change the number of babies with us, we have to come up with a good reason why we change the numbers. We got the math study. So, I'm in the process of doing that. I don't know if you were standing at the thousand dollars game, we got the math study, mine.
We got one from the state.
Results, mine not being able to be filtered gauge, while we're still in the lineup.
Is that, is that, what I'm just asking, is that two separate things, though? Is the Architect suffer from that?
Yeah. Yeah.
I had, I conducted three and a half, it's down in ten years, meeting demographic studies, and then eventually, obviously, we had to expand. I mean, full-day kindergarten is a district goal, um this Monday, next Monday night, at Stoney Brook School, Mrs. Alawale and Mrs. Yutel will come out on fences swinging with full-day kindergarten, what that looks like for our community, um but then as we go forward, what are our numbers? Because we have had some turnover, I know there's a lot of new families like myself that migrated here. Um the last demographic study, I think, cost us uh eight thousand dollars, I don't know about thirty, but uh you know, obviously depending on firm, they vary. It's just good practice, and you haven't had a full one, is why I recommend that, but the choice is that important. Because sometimes numbers are trending or skewed.
Okay, well, why don't we um, why don't we postpone, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the demographic studies talk, so the board can have more time to uh discuss it, and we can postpone that too.
I don't think you need to make a motion, I like to start the agenda.
Yeah.
Is it?
Well, you know, you're right, because I actually didn't make a motion to discuss it, okay, good point, so we're talking about the architect, then let's um get back to that, um we do have an architecture firm and civil engineering firm, um just the discussion on whether we think we wanna interview them, since we have specific things that we can go through that we can ask people and then get, you know, kind of a even more of a tailored bid on proposals when we go to them, I think it might be good, that's from my perspective, but would somebody else have comments?
We do need to list items for both the council and the architect, and both of the RFP. Like for the council, are we looking for general fee though, or special pay, or negotiations, I mean, you have, it has to be put out there in the more specific, and it will include all the services, and he kind of wanted us to know what you're looking for. We did know, you know, what you're looking for.
I don't know if Dave has experience with that, but I think you can, you know, you can get different attorneys for different aspects of it, right? Versus like, you know, our current attorney does, Paul, maybe I want attorney like Paul, does the negotiations piece, and it's something to have.
Well, I think when we put the ad out, we add, we, what we need board council for is litigation, uh maybe, so especially with the, any kind of
I mean, I I like, I like having one firm that represents us in all, like has expertise in all the different areas, which I just think is more efficient that way versus paying different attorneys, but I mean, I think when we, I don't know how we decide with the languages, is that, how do we decide with the languages?
Well, it's really a full decision of the board, we could craft it both ways if you want. I've I've worked it both ways, with one council I could currently have, and then I've operated for ten years with two, one who's labor and construction, and one is special ed and legal. The churches of the boards, you know, and you'll know more as you interview.
So do we have to, I'm sorry, go back to the, do we have to decide right now, I mean, we know what we need as a board, can we just advertise that we need council to represent the Killelawn Board of Education, and then as we're interviewing them, and we determine the strengths of each?
Well, it's certainly part of the RFP, right?
Like we put out something for the RFP that says, this is what we want.
Right, of course, right, because we could put that out, and maybe come back, and we could say, we like this, this firm for negotiation.
If you, you know, take one call.
Right.
Like we have the board who goes down, so the board of the RFP that we're looking for, you know, an attorney who needs kind of qualifications, probably made like ten years in negotiations, five years in special ed. All that's gotta be part of the RFP, so the board that come up with those specifications before I can even push out to the
So why don't we maybe draft something to get out?
We will draft something and we will send it back to you. Yeah, you got to the architect. Does anybody have any discussions, things I want to talk about as far as doing that, the architect, going to RFP with, again, specifics that we're looking for in an architect and civil engineering firm, especially since we do know we have capital projects that are required. That's okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. King, will you pull the board, please, for RFP for architect and civil engineering firm?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetter?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Corona?
Yes.
Mr. Jeff Silry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ford?
Yes.
Okay, last item of new business is the uh Keisha Cisco agreement, so it's an agreement to allow Keisha to store you know, tricky tray items in the Cisco building. Um that's last minute addition, we added that because we didn't wanna wait. Um we wouldn't normally do that at this meeting, but we wanted to let them use it as soon as possible, and then we, they have to wait almost till next month, so um it was sent to everybody, did that, did everybody get a chance to see it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm uh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the Keisha Cisco agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing um this team, this is to approve the agreement, so just to be clear, this is to approve the agreement between the district and Keisha. So this team will pull the board for approving this agreement.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetter?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Corona?
Yes.
Mr. Jeff Silry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ford?
Yes.
Okay, now we're to public comment for non-agenda items, if anybody has a comment they would like to make for the please, you'll bring them up this time. Let's see, anybody, um this team, would you please read the question from the email?
From Karen? Mrs. Gingo? Messages, please specifically tell us what we talk about high school, nothing was actually told.
I think somebody probably reached out to me a little in private, but I'm guessing it's Health and P E, looking like that, but.
That's the message. What about this?
I I was under the same lines of impression, uh Mr. Jeff Silry, but we'll reach out, we'll find out which which uh you know, specifically is it Health and P E, we are working, we're finalizing all those lessons, we have another curriculum focus meeting on February second, I'm sorry, my neck. I don't need to go like that, um so Mrs. Gingo, you're more than welcome to straighten mine, but if you have any questions between now and then, you can contact my office directly, contact the high school office directly, we'll be well and happy, and uh Mrs. Moore, I'll take the only information we have as of right now. That will be finalized during um the professional development day for Dr. Mark with Ken, with our P E health staff here in high school.
Excellent. Okay, um that's it, we're, we're adjourned then, so. Oh, yeah, that is, thank you for that, um just, yeah, real quick, um I did not mention, while we were talking about the committees, please, I will send everybody an email just to give me your top three requests, and I'll try to match everybody up with within the month to be. Okay. All right, I I didn't mean to, gee, I will email them all out to request it as well, as well, and then um we'll talk about meeting, get the committee sponsor form about the the first seven meetings. Okay. All right, um normally do you, yeah?
Just a question, are we in that meeting on the next Tuesday or Thursday? Since we just went, I guess it's a point we go forward on Tuesdays, I guess, and I just go, I forget the dates out there, but.
Well, we'll get the, the fourth Tuesday.
The fourth Tuesday is the next.
That's the next, now that we've changed it, and we can now help each other here. And it might not be the second of August, depends on the budget, calendar, so I could take those, take with that, take with the spring worries, you know, you do the spring break, but also try to accommodate.
And just on the new board members, now there's usually one meeting a month from the summer, right, and if you're on holiday, it's basically and then November, December, we can meet, just because of holidays.
Oh, and I did, um I did schedule um for our ethics training will be February twenty eighth, so it'd be that, uh
I'm sorry, what was I?
Uh February twenty eighth, which should be meeting, so Sharni will be here for our ethics training. And I'll I'll also email that for everybody.
Do you have a time and date?
It's at the regular meeting, so it'll start or maybe.
No, I'll probably get it back to Mary.
Okay, and uh a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All taken. Aye.